Good afternoon and welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of April 3, 2023. In accordance with LB 898, please be advised that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber in the northwest, by the northwest door. Let us all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a short period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The order of the business of the Lincoln City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda. Under public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The council shall require any member of the public desiring to address the council to identify themselves, the name of an organization or group, including an address that you may be representing by such person or group unless the address requirement is waived to protect the security of that individual. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, organization or group, and whatever you are speaking, and whether you are speaking in favor of or in opposition to that item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. Will the clerk please call the first item of business?
Our first item of business today for our council meeting on Monday, April 3, 2023, is our consent agenda, Sections 1 and Sections 2.
Is there anyone present to testify on these items? Please come forward.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Liz Elliott, Director of Lincoln Transportation Utilities. It's my privilege to introduce our nominee for the Startran Advisory Board, Liz Standish. Liz has dedicated her career to community service, public service, and the educational system. And as you all know, a large population of our writers are Lincoln Public School children. And so we thought what a great way to continue to build our partnership with LPS and to bring that insight and experience onto our board. And so Liz has graciously said that she'd be willing to help us out and we would ask for your confirmation today. And I'll let Liz introduce herself.
I would just say I'm thrilled to be appointed on this board because the district greatly appreciates the partnership with Startran. And we just appreciate having a voice on the advisory committee. And I love serving students in our community and I'll bring that to the advisory board.
Good. Welcome, Dr. Standish. We're glad to have you here. Are there questions or comments for Dr. Standish? I look at Councilman McGinnis. Yes.
Well, since she hasn't run out of the room yet, we have to officially put her in. But I want to say some nice things about Dr. Standish. Worked with her for many years and she was very helpful and very open. And it was enjoyable as a board member and to have her as our superintendent, business affairs. So I'll look forward to this and thought maybe you'd have better senses by now, but...
You didn't teach me well enough.
I didn't tell you, I didn't tell you to run early enough, did I?
Very good. Thank you. Councilwoman Washington.
Well, I'm glad to see you nominated and appointed to the Startran Advisory Board. And I hope this means that we'll be able to work out the last little kinks in making certain that we assure every student who needs to get to school on a public bus gets there safely.
Great. Are there comments or questions for Dr. Standish? Yes, Councilman McGinnis?
My famous line, "Just one more thing?" No.
Are you sure?
Ask questions like that every once in a while.
We do appreciate the City of Lincoln's relationship with Lincoln Public Schools. We're real honored that you would say yes and so welcome. Glad to have you serve. Thank you as well, Dr. Elliott. So, doctor, I just promoted you.
She's a doctorate, so technically...
She kind of is. She's got a doctorate in a lot of things, I'm sure. So, welcome. And thank you, Director Elliott. All right. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else present that would like to testify on Items 1 or 2? Items 1 and 2? All right. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, let's move on.
We can now vote on these items. Item 1A is appointing Liz Standish to the Startran Advisory Board for a term to expire April 3, 2026, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Suarez. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Suarez?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 1B is reappointing Dr. Jaclyn Miller to the Lincoln Lancaster County Board of Health for a term to expire April 15, 2026, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Washington. Further discussion? Councilman Bowers?
I just want to say that Dr. Miller is great. She's been an awesome advocate on the Board of Health and I'm looking forward to working with her as she continues to serve the community. She's a great person.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Discussion, all right. Seeing none, please call the vote.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Suarez?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 1C is reappointing Jim Johnson and Dan Worth to the Historic Preservation Commission for terms to expire April 15, 2026, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Washington. Discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Suarez?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 1D is approving TLYNN Inc., doing business as Little Risky, located at 4620 Bear Avenue as Aquino Satellite, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by McGinnis. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Suarez?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Items 2A and 2B were introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? Seconded by Suarez. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Bowers?
Yes.
Suarez?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. That concludes our consent agenda. We shall now move on to Section 4 of Public Hearing Liquor Resolutions. I'll be calling Items 4A and 4B together. Application of Jacob Thiessen and Crystal Bach, doing business as the Hub Cafe of our Class I K liquor license located at 250 North 21st Street, Suite 3, and the related manager application of Jacob P. Thiessen.
Welcome.
I'm going to swear you in. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you really believe it to be? Thank you.
I do.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, City Council members. My name is Jacob Thiessen and I live at 1016 South 8th Street. We're applying for the liquor license for Hub Cafe.
And my name is Crystal Bach. I am Jacob's wife, also at 1016 South 8th. And we look forward to moving forward with the liquor license and hope that we could eventually own the Hub Cafe.
Thank you for being here. We see that in the audience are the current owners, previous, so we can't say enough about the Hub Cafe. Congratulations to you. Other questions or comments from the council or the new applicants? Yeah, best wishes.
Thank you so much.
Very exciting time. All right. Anything else? Okay. Seeing none, we will vote at the end of the other applicants. Is there anything? Doug?
Anyone else wants to speak?
Yes. Thank you. Right. Mr. Dipman?
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you for being part of the City Council. I'm Doug Dipman and this is Hub Cafe 250 North 21st. So Hub Cafe, it's a wonderful place and it's really been decades into planning in that it sits at the center of 130 miles of bike trail in the city and along the Antelope Creek and on Union Plaza, which is a real gem. So it's got a unique role to play. We host a music festival, farmers market. It adjoins the amphitheater for many community events. And I think accordingly, it requires community-minded people. And Jacob and Crystal are that. They're wonderful people. I've worked with Jake for eight years, hardworking guy. If Jake wakes up at 6:00 in the morning, he feels like he's missed half the day. And so he's done a good job. I've watched Jake mature considerably and grow. And of course, Crystal works at UNL and so they're a real power couple. And so I just wanted to just jump up and say how I'm a real believer, I'm a big fan. And Carl and I feel strongly for Hub to continue to grow and serve the community in a better and better way. We recently did some expansions and thank you very much for the Dine Out program and et cetera, that it's important for them to be owners in order for it to grow into the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Dipman? Comments? All right. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much for all you've done for Lincoln. Anyone else present that would like to testify on this item? We are on Items 4A and 4B. All right. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, let's move on.
I'll be calling Item 4C, Manager Application of Glenn A. Bateman for SMG Food and Beverage LLC, doing business as Pinnacle Bank Arena located at 400 Pinnacle Bank Arena Drive.
Hello, I'm Glenn Bateman, Director of Food and Beverage at Pinnacle Bank Arena.
Welcome.
Been there for about seven years.
I'm Tim Sabona, General Manager at Pinnacle Bank Arena.
All right. Anyone to tell us what your application is for?
Yeah, so this is actually a continuance from November due to some unfortunate circumstances relating to personnel and changing of names related to who is on the license. So this is retro to November 1 in hindsight. And the new name and the new applicant on it going forward will be Glenn Bateman, our Director of Food and Beverage.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions regarding the applications or comments? All right. Good to have you both here. Very appreciate it. Thank you. Anyone else present that would like to testify on this item? Item 4C. Item 4C. All right. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, let's move on.
I'll be calling Item 4D, Application of Charm LLC, doing business as Charm Boutique and Bar for a change in location of their existing Class I liquor license from 200 South 21st Street, Suite A 114 to 2910 Pine Lake Road, Suite L.
Okay. Anyone else? I'm sorry, is there someone here to testify on this item? Mr. Peter Parker saying the applicant is not present, but if there's anyone else, you're welcome to come forward. All right. Seeing done, we can move on.
I'll be calling Item 4E, Application of Glacial Till Vineyard and Winery LLC, doing business as Glacial Till for special designated licenses to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 10 feet by 10 feet at the Haymarket Farmers Market at 7th and P Streets on May 6, 13, 20, and 27 from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., June 3, 10, 17, and 24th, July 1, 8, 15, 22, and 29th from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., August 5, 12, 9, 26th from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., September 2, 9, 16, 23rd, and 30th from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., and October 7th and 14th from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m.
Please come forward. You're going to be busy. Hi, welcome.
My name is Lisa Bulas and I'm here on behalf of Glacial Till Vineyard.
All right. Very good. Can you tell us a little bit more about your application?
Yeah, so we've been a part of the Lincoln Farmers Market for a number of years and it's operating a little pop-up 10 by 10 space to serve samples of just the wine and the cider to customers 21 and older, just in the vicinity of our tent. And then they're able to purchase six-packs of cider or bottles of wine to go.
Great. Thank you. Any questions or comments for our applicant? All right. Seeing none, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, we can... Oh, is there anyone else present to testify on this item? Item 4E. All right. Seeing none, we can move on.
I'll be calling Item 4F, Application of McFarland Family Farms LLC, doing business as Max Creek Vineyards and Winery for special designated licenses to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 10 feet by 10 feet at the Hay Farmers Market at 246 North 8th Street on May 6 and 20th from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., June 3 and 17th, and July 1, 15th and 29th from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m.
Is there anyone present to testify on this item?
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
My name is Max McFarland, aka Mac. No, we didn't name the winery after me. Max Creek is short for McFarland, not Max, okay? But we've got to get that straight. We're happy to be here and would appreciate your consideration of our application for SDLs and hopeful approval for several of the farmers markets, not quite as many as Glacial Till, that's a little further from Lexington to get here. And so we pared that down a little bit. We've been involved for several years. Absolutely love it down here and look forward to doing it again.
Well, thank you for being here. We're glad that you come down for the Farmers Market indeed. So any questions from the council for our applicant?
Thanks for making the drive.
Ah, my pleasure.
Yes. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else present to testify on this item? Item 4F, anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we can move on, Madam Clerk.
I'll be calling Item 4G and 4H together. Application of Kincaid Brewing Company LLC, doing business as Kincaid Brewing Company for a special designated licenses to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 160 feet by 42 feet at the Lincoln Station Building at 201 North 7th Street on April 22 from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m., September 16, 23rd, and 30th from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m., October 21st and 28th from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m., and November 11th and 24th from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. And Item 4H is application of Kincaid Brewing, doing business as Beer House Mashler, for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 68 feet by 50 feet at 151 North 8th Street on April 22 from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m.
Hey, guys. Cody Schmick, C-O-D-Y-S-C-H-M-I-C-K, office from 1630 P Street. 4G is what we've done for five years now is just expand for game days, starting with the spring game on the April 22 date, and then the rest of those are football game days. Beer House, we're doing something a little different. It's working with Speedway. There's actually a beautiful rooftop space there that's very underutilized. So we're looking at doing a form of a tailgate up there as well, very similar to what we're doing over at Kincaid. So be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Comments?
Mr. Schmick, I think you answered your... answered my question because I was like, why are you doing two SDLs on the same day?
Right. Two different licenses too. So, yeah.
Totally different locations.
Yep. Yep. And this is actually, the first ones at Kincaid, the other ones around the corner at Beer House, yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? I would just say those pretzels are unbelievable.
Oh, thank you. Thanks.
Like two meals in one.
It's going well.
I bet, yeah. I was busy when I was there. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else present to testify on this item? Item 4H, anyone else?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Seeing no one else coming forward to testify, I'd like to move approval of Items 4A through 4H.
Second.
Seconded by Washington. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Suarez?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. That concludes Section 4 of our agenda. We shall move on to Section 5 of Public Hearing Resolutions. Item 5A is approving a grant agreement between the City of Lincoln on behalf of the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department and the Nebraska Environmental Trust for up to $1,345,000 grant for LLC HD, maximizing "Has To Go" Lincoln's Hazardous Waste Center through material reuse for a three-year term.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Brock Hanisch. I'm Waste Management and Hazardous Materials Section Supervisor at Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department. The resolution before you is to approve a grant agreement between the City of Lincoln on behalf of the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department and the Nebraska Environmental Trust for up to $1,345,000 and for a three-year term. These grant funds will be utilized to develop and implement the reused program at "Has To Go" Lincoln's Household Hazardous Waste Center. This reused program will include construction of a reused store, marketing and branding, and toxics reduction education. One more component that's important to realize is that we've submitted an application to the Planning Department requesting an amendment to the City Capital Improvement Plan for the proposed structure addition to the existing "Has To Go" facility, and that will be coming in the next few weeks, as I would expect. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Questions for Mr. Ennis? Is that correct, Ennis?
What's that?
Ennis, is that correct?
Hanisch.
Thank you.
Yes. Sorry about that.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Is there anyone else present to testify on this item? Item 5A. Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, let's move on.
I'll be calling Item 5B, Approving an Energy Services Contract Between the City of Lincoln and Schneider Electric in the amount of $1,23,124.35 for the Water Resource Recovery Facility Smart Eration System Project.
Good afternoon, Liz Elliott, Director of Lincoln Transportation Utilities, 555 South 10th Street. This is not a new contract, although it looks like it on here. This is a contract that has been before you back in February of 2021, I think is when it was. Unfortunately, due to supply chain issues, the project is taking us a little longer than we had anticipated. So this is asking to extend the contract date. There is no increase in costs or anything, it's just purely moving the date out till December 31 of 2023.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thanks, Director. Or is that doctor?
I'll take either.
I know. Any questions? Comments? All right. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else present to testify on this item? Item 5B. Item 5B. All right. Seeing none, let's move on, Madam Clerk.
I'll be calling Item 5C, Approving the Design Building Contract or the Construction Management at Risk Contract Delivery System for all public projects for water, wastewater, utility, or sewer construction, including the Teresa Street Capacity Improvement Project and the Water Supply Development Project for Lincoln Water Systems, Water 2.0 Provided For in the Political Subdivision Construction Alternatives Act.
Thank you, Liz Elliott, again, Director, LTU. This is a project that we have talked about at various stages. The last one was during the budget discussions that we had. This is a project expansion for our Teresa Street wastewater facility. When looking at this project, it's extremely complex, not only because of the site, we're trying to do it all on our existing footprint and just fill in the blank spots essentially on the canvas there, but also the underneath, underground. We have a lot of different underground utilities that are there, which makes this even more complex and that this will be a multi-year project that we will be seeing throughout the Teresa Street. Because of those complexities, we decided that a construction manager at risk procurement construction method would be ideal for this type of project. A construction manager at risk or a CMAR process, we expect will allow us to complete the project faster. We're anticipating that it will speed up the bidding and contract process by about 12%. Because we are able to do it, we're projecting about a year, we'll be able to complete it about a year earlier. It will help us keep costs lower and we're projecting that to be about a 6% reduction in costs. We also believe that because the designer and the contractor will be able to work together throughout the entire process, we will be able to reduce the number of change orders that we may typically see in our normal design bid-build process. Part of the complexities with this is that we have a number of permitting-ish steps that we have to take, and normally we don't start that until after the design is done. And that takes about, it could take up to 12, 18 months to get those permits. We also have several long lead times on the equipment and supplies needed, again, another kind of 12 to 18 months. By doing the CMAR process, we're able to get those ordered, get the permit process started sooner, and that ultimately results in getting the contract, or not the contract, the project completed about a year earlier. So we believe this is the right type of project to utilize a CMAR process. And so we are here, under the state statute, utilities were not able to do this kind of procurement construction method up until about two years ago when the state statute approved this. The state statute does require that we bring it before the city council and seek your approval of this method before we can begin the process. So we're here asking for you to consider and approve using the CMAR method for our utility projects. It's a type of process that's used on LFR stations, LPS projects, and some other projects across the communities across Nebraska. It just never has been an option for utilities because of state statute. And we wouldn't use it for all projects, but complex, multi-year projects, this is a perfect fit. So we are proposing that here on this project. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I do have, so we will have an internal project manager, which is Todd Bowling, our superintendent of our water... project manager, which is Todd Bowling, our superintendent of our Water Resource Recovery Facilities, who's present, and as well as our project manager from Olson, Jeremy Walker, correct? Yes, sorry, he's also present to answer any questions, should you have any, but they will both be seeing the project through.
Questions for Director Elliott. Councilwoman McGinnis?
Yes, thank you, and I agree, this is gonna be a long, fun project, I guess. Anytime you build new, it's fun. And I totally agree that the construction manager at risk would be a good way to move forward on this project. But what's in front of us now is just not that project. This is us to approve all projects that wastewater, water, utilities would see fit to do as a construction manager at risk.
That is correct, and I apologize for not talking about that side of it. What is before you today is the approving the method of the CMAR, and we do have Chris Connolly here. What is currently proposed is very similar to what exists right now in Administrative Regulation 29, I believe it is, which allows it for buildings, for like Lincoln Fire and Rescue. This does allow it for all utility projects. That is the breadth of what the state statute allows. They say you can approve all of them, and so that is what the draft before you does stay is for any, whenever we believe that it would be appropriate within guidelines set out by the mayor's office, or by the mayor, sorry.
Yeah, Chris Connolly, City Law. Excuse me, as Liz indicated, the statute changed a couple of years ago. Prior to that, the only way that cities could use the CMAR project delivery process was really for vertical construction, so buildings. So now it's being allowed for certain horizontal utility-type construction, still not allowed for roads. And so, as part of that, we have to go through this process, and Liz has just done about explaining to the council why this is an appropriate process. The statute, though, is silent as to whether or not it has to be for each individual project. The statute, as it read before, didn't say that either, didn't, that's not a change. So we have previously interpreted that to be that it applies to all projects going forward. And so, in terms of the regulations, yes, there's, there's nothing in the statute that says that the regulations need to be set forth. That is a result of the prior resolution that the council approved back in 2010 that allowed use of CMAR for buildings. There was instruction in there to the mayor to develop some policies, which resulted in AR 29 for construction of buildings. We expect that we would do something similar. Those kinds of things have not been worked out yet, but that's, that's what's before you today, is to allow us to go ahead and move forward with, with those processes, as allowed by state statute.
Other questions? Councilwoman Washington?
When you're, let's assume passage, so if you were to look at a project three years from now, and you had a choice of doing it in a number of different ways, what are the kinds of questions you would ask to determine whether or not, and I know you haven't figured it out completely, but what are the kind of questions you'd ask to determine if a CMAR process was the right one to use?
Well, yeah, since we have done these, obviously with a number of buildings, we look at the complexity of the project, we look at whether or not, what's the cost, general industry guidelines would tell you $10 million or more on a project is a good size for a CMAR project delivery system. The advantages to the construction manager at risk is that, well, the things in addition to what Liz has talked about is that we can do these through a request for proposal. And there are certain advantages in the RFP process that allow you to dive deeper into who your proposers are and what their qualifications are and those sorts of things. Knowing that the project is gonna be very complex, and we do have certain expectations of how they're gonna conduct their way of business going forward. How are they hiring their subs? What do they want to do for safety considerations? How involved are they gonna get in the design process? That's something that's typically very important. We like to get the, see, the construction manager onboard early at about 30% design spot, and then typically at around 60% is when we would then start to get a guaranteed maximum price and a number from the contractor as to how much it's actually gonna cost. So there's, there's, these are the advantages, I think, to using a construction manager at risk on these complex projects.
Well, it has, it has worked well on, as you said, our vertical projects.
Yes, yes, and we've, we've had, we have had project control and others serve as project managers also to sort of keep an eye on the construction manager, so.
Thank you.
Councilman Shob?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you both for coming forward. I'm a little confused, and so today before us is approving the one for just this project and giving you the leeway to consider this in the future?
This would be allowing us to do it on any utility project that we believe would be appropriate use on. It does have some requirements that the mayor set out, some policies and procedures, just like they did back in 2010 on the other one, and so it'd be a very similar process with this.
So if you had another project and the mayor outlined some policies and procedures, would you still come back to us for approval, or are we out of the loop now?
Not necessarily to approve whether or not we use the CMAR method. It would be more of any contracts that would typically come before council, but not on whether or not we could use the method.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilwoman McGinnis?
Did you come back to us with a construction manager at risk contract?
It depends on the circumstances.
But you wouldn't have to?
There may be occasions where it is not necessary. That is correct.
Majority of the time, I would believe they would come back just because of the size and the complexity would be multi-years or other circumstances that would require. But there could be, you don't want to give the blanket, there could be those situations where, yes, we would not have to come back before council.
The funding has been fully appropriated, and it's all there. Before we begin the contract, under the, under the charter, it's, it's not always necessary to come to the council with those kinds of agreements. If it has not been fully funded in, in the first year, then yes, we, there's, it has to, and so it depends on where the funding is at.
At the time we're asked to fund it, you would tell us at that time if it's gonna be a construction manager at risk or not? I mean, when we funded the Teresa Street, it was never part of a conversation.
And I, I could see that where it would come up, kind of like this one. The more we dove into the project and really looked at what is the best option for the value, for the timelines, we decided, yes, we thought the CMAR. So when we were back in front of you during budget time, this wasn't something that we knew the direction we were gonna go on. So if this was, in theory, all appropriated this year, once this resolution went in, if that's approved, you're correct, we wouldn't have to come back and seek council's approval.
I think the selection of the delivery process turns a lot on having discussions with consultants, with architects, engineers, and, and looking at, at the complexities and what do they think collectively, including staff from the city? What do they think is the best way to deliver a good project on schedule and on, on, on or under budget?
This option has been available to us for the last two years from state statute. We've not had a project where we thought it was appropriate, so we never brought this option before you, again, because not, very few of our projects would need CMAR and this method. Most of our main replacements and all of those are typical projects that would never, we would never consider this. It's only now on this really large, complex project have we thought about it and started to discuss it, and so it's not a every day or even every year type of method that we would use, and I think the fact that we haven't brought it forward for two years is supportive of that.
So for the last two years, you didn't need at this point?
Right.
And so that means probably one project every few years, basically, because we're looking at large numbers, and multi-year projects, they're a good way to do it. I really approve using the CMAR on this project. I'm just wondering about, for a little bit of transparency and such that the public would know that we are using the CMAR, can you come back to the city council and get approval to do the CMAR, because they are gonna be multi-year, big projects, probably not projects that you need approval for? I know we're a pain in the butt to come back, it takes, takes too long, and three weeks, and file, and everything else, but I still think that when you're talking big projects like this one, 40 million, it's a good way to have it be part of the public process and come back to the city council on this. And/or the other part of this that bothers me a little bit is we do not know any of the policies in selecting the CMAR, and that hasn't been brought forward yet, and that's gonna be done after we approve this. Is there any way you could come back with those policies that we need to approve? That would help me a little bit, but just having this out there, that you can go forward and do these projects, I think these sometimes, I say, people in the community, small community, there's only so many contractors, and they're all gonna want a shot at it, so it becomes a little bit more of a, well, you did this without ever letting us know, or we weren't part of the RFP, which I doubt on these sizes you would do without having, reaching out to everybody. But I think transparency and at least coming back in front of us and say, we are wanting approval to do the construction manager at risk, and this is the first one. We don't know how it's gonna turn out. It'd be good to have another shot at it.
The, the short answer is yes. There, I mean, there's obviously nothing in the statute that says that we can't come back, and if that's, if that's the wishes of the council, that can be certainly put in there. With regard to the policies, that's what was in there in 2010, and what is being proposed here is, is directing the mayor in her executive capacity to develop the policies and procedures. You know, we didn't have a lot of policies and procedures going in the building, Pinnacle Bank Arena, but that's what we used. We used this construction manager at risk, and so certainly the council can make its statement as to what it wants us to do as staff, but the, the mayor has the, historically has had the final say on those kinds of regulations. Administrative regulations are that. They are administrative in nature. They are not approved by the council as such. But you can certainly instruct the mayor, as is being done here, to make sure that those get developed.
Councilman Shob?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My questions have been answered. I appreciate your acknowledgement.
Councilwoman Washington?
I just want, would like you to, oops, microphone, I would like you to clarify. Just, this is a procurement method, right?
It's a, it's a project delivery method.
A project delivery method, so how the project actually gets delivered, but not whether or not the project gets approved. Project approval still comes before council when we have these large projects. I mean, you're still gonna come before us and, and present the project. It's part of the CIP, so we have...
And the CIP was, of course, where you, you gave initial permission to go forward and spend $40 million.
$40 million, so that is still left with council. It's only how we deliver the project, or how you deliver the project.
Right, that's why it's called a project delivery system, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Councilwoman Suarez?
Thank you. I just wanted to make a comment. My understanding is that CMAR has become more popular, more common as time has gone on, and I just appreciate you presenting this as an option, because you talked about saving money, speeding up the process, and I have had some experience with CMAR at another institution, and I found it to be a very good process, and so I do support this. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other comments, questions? Councilman McGinnis?
Yeah, when I was with the other institution, I was the one that worked hard to get it in through the legislature, so that the public institutions or political subdivision could use this, so I was a firm believer in it all the way, too. But as of now, I don't believe LPS allows it on an open basis. It has to come back in front of the board to be approved at every time, and that's the way the, the person that runs that department feels like it should be.
Other comments or questions? Councilwoman Washington?
Well, it begs the question, when we used CMAR to construct the last couple of LFR stations and LPD, how was that process done? Did you ask permission each time we built a fire station?
The answer is no.
Okay, and how did the process work from your end?
Well, the, the selection process didn't have any issues. Now, we did, that's not to say that individual projects didn't have some problems with them, as you sometimes have, but there was nothing that I would say that was somehow rooted or a cause of the CM at risk project delivery system being used.
So you had no other contractors or groups of subcontractors argue the RFP process in construction, fire stations or anything?
No, we, no, we, the, the, the kinds of disputes that we ran into with the fire station projects were the same kinds of disputes that you run into with any general contractor and a sub. And what we do with our CM at risk is, we monitor, we, we don't just allow the general to go out and hire anybody. They have to run all their, their subcontractor bids through our e-bid system, and we're allowed to look at them, and if we see someone that we think is objectionable, we're allowed to raise that with the general and have a discussion with them. Now, ultimately, it is still their decision, but they, we, we do get engaged on that, and we've, we've used that, and so, so we do, we do try and keep close oversight as the project is going along.
Well, I appreciate the efficiencies, both time and money, and it seems like it's been very successful for the city in some of our other projects, and I'm interested to see how we can best use this to expand Teresa Street, and I'm sure that there'll be other utility projects. I know you can't forecast them yet, and as my colleague, Councilwoman McGinnis, says, it's probably a procurement or a project delivery system that you won't use more than every couple of years or so.
Yeah, if we're looking at using them for $10 million-plus projects, they don't come around all the time, so.
Yeah, second water source comes to mind in my mind, but thank you.
I'm sorry.
Second water source comes to mind.
Yes, yes, yes. Well, and that's, that's referencing here, so, yes, that's why we're trying to cover both of those bases now.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, Director Elliott, were you going to say something?
No, I was just gonna say, because of the success at LFR and other places, it was something that we still felt confident moving forward with, so.
Thank you for that. All right, seeing no other questions, thank you both very much. Anyone else present to testify on item 5C? Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, let's move on.
I'll be calling item 5D, miscellaneous 23002, application of Director of Urban Development Department to declare the 56th, 70th, and Fletcher redevelopment area generally located between 56th Street on the west, Salt Creek on the north, 84th Street on the east, and Fletcher Avenue on the south, blighted and substandard.
Councilwoman McGinnis, I'll recognize you, but Ms. Salem, do you want to introduce a name?
Should we have her do a quick explanation first? And then this is up for public.
On, after Planning Commission, we were approached by a landowner in the blighted and substandard area, or the, the observation area, to request to be included as part of the blight and substandard study area, and in anticipation of them wanting to move forward and in being included in that study area, we have asked to put this item on pending, no date certain, until they make that decision, and we can determine whether or not it has to go back to Planning Commission, or that we can move forward with it on city council.
Thank you for that. Is there anyone present that would like to testify on this item, item 5D?
Good afternoon, I'm Richard Hawerson, 6311 Inverness Road. This area we're talking about, it's farmland. It's not a slum. It's not filled with the terracing buildings. It's basically flat-open, well, water plants in the area, but other than that, it's all farmland. And there are criteria laid out for, you know, blighted areas, like poverty, poverty rates, unemployment rates, deterioration of buildings, but none of these fit. There can't be much unemployment if nobody lives there. Poverty, it looks like nobody, I didn't see any houses there. It appears like... It appears like, well, I'm thinking of a story when somebody asked the county attorney to define pornography for them. And the county attorney says, oh, I don't know how to define it, but I know it when I see it. And if there's, it appears to be planning, oh, okay, what's the, what's blighted? Well, whatever we think is blighted. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else present to testify on this item? Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, Councilwoman McGinnis, I'll recognize you.
Okay. I will make a motion that we put item five D, is it?
Yes. Five D.
On pending, no date certain.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Further discussion?
I just had a question, I guess, for, for Hallie Salem. Thank you. Not a deal breaker. When we say no date certain, I always, those always, it gives me pause. Is there, I mean, is there a reason we can't close that in with a month or two or, those are always just hanging out there. I just, that's the only way I can say it, so.
I think, I think the purpose of the no date certain is that we don't have a definitive timeline from the, um, Hannah Kealan Associates on how long it would take them to make that determination. And so, um, once the landowners make that decision, we'd like them to make that within the next week. Um, then we've got to conduct the analysis.
Fair enough. Just curious how that could work. All right. Yes, Councilman McGinnis?
Yeah, and like she said, that first, they got to decide what properties, which ones will want to come in. And then two, if that, you got to do the actual report. And then if we are bringing on others, it will likely have to go back to planning, correct?
Right, right.
If we add these properties back in, then it would have to go through planning also and the timing of that.
It would go through the whole process.
And the original applicant who brought this forward was okay with that and let it go, but on the other hand, if they're not going to come forward and want to do this, they would like to bring this forward as soon as possible. So it could be a week or two weeks or it could be three months. But on the other hand, I don't think the applicant's going to let this sit very long.
No, our hope would, our hope would be that it, it would not take that long.
Okay, good. It just seems like a lot of leeway for, and we just don't do it that often, so.
No, I agree.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. All right. Any other further questions? Comments? All right. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll on the motion to, uh, put on pending, no date certain?
Bowers?
Yes.
Suarez?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. I'll be calling item five E and five F together. Comprehensive Plan Conformance 23001, application of urban development directed to review as to conformance with the 2050 Lincoln Lancaster Comprehensive Plan. I propose amendment to the North 27th Street Corridor and Environs Redevelopment Plan to add the 27th and Star redevelopment project for construction of a 12-unit apartment building, three townhomes and associated parking on the property generally located at the northeast corner of North 27th and Star Streets and the related First Amendment to the Development and Conditional Zoning Agreement between the city and LA Real Estate LLC for the property generally located at 2716 Star Street, 2718 Star Street and 1420 North 27th Street.
My apologies, council members. I don't think I introduced myself the last time I was up here. Hallie Salem Urban Development, 555 South 10th Street. Um, with me today is Ernie Castillo, planner on the redevelopment project, as well as representatives of the redevelopment team, Mark Hunsaker and Aaron Byrd, the developer. Before you today is an amendment to the North 27th Street Corridor and Environs Redevelopment Plan for the 27th and Star redevelopment project, seeking a review as to conformance with the comprehensive plan. The project proposes to include the redevelopment of two properties with a 12-unit apartment complex, a building and three townhomes with associated parking at 1.5 stalls per unit, which is consistent with the R6 requirements for parking. The project will be a mix of market rate and affordable units and the project area includes the adjacent alley and, uh, the pocket park at 27th and Holdridge as well as some right-of-way. So I'll just show you the, as soon as it comes up. The hatched area is the project area. The site is located here. Um, the pocket park is located here. Um, and then this is the east-west alley. Um, a motion to amend during planning commission, replace the plan amendment with the revised plan amendment, which you see immediately following the staff report in your packet. The total cost to implement the project is 2.75 million. With a value expected of about 2.4 million, um, which should generate approximately 44,000 in TIF, um, over the course of 20 years. Uh, at seven percent interest, that would yield approximately $447,000 in increment. The staff recommendation in, is conformance with the comprehensive plan. It supports infill development, utilizes existing infrastructure, adds to the city's housing stock and affordable housing stock and helps meet the overall goal of adding 12,000 new infill dwelling units by 2050. The project is consistent with the North 27th Street Redevelopment Plan and supports the complete neighborhoods by offering a variety of housing types with access to transit on both 27th and Holdridge Streets, walkability to grocery stores, services and restaurants. As part of the redevelopment plan, in conjunction with partners like Neighbor Works Lincoln, efforts were made to buy dilapidated, um, housing units, um, parcels, um, over the last couple of decades and, um, this is one of those areas, one, two lots that were purchased, um, actually three lots, which included a former car lot and two dilapidated vacant homes that were purchased in, in 2010. So this was the car lot and then two houses. Um, this is street view from, uh, 2009. So those lots were then sold in 2018. Um, and the original project was a townhome project and the developer who made efforts could not, um, close on those efforts, the original developer. Uh, and the, there was a change of zone approved as part of that project from B3 and R4 to R6. And so the current developer purchased it in November of 2022 and their project is also consistent with what was originally proposed. There is a proposed resolution as part of these two items to amend the development agreement, um, as part of that, uh, zoning change to say that no more than 15 rather than nine dwelling units be constructed on the property and that it also includes four to five street trees as part of that development agreement change. Then, um, so Urban Design Committee, other items of history to note, Urban Design Committee reviewed this and approved on January 3rd with some, um, comments, uh, that they, uh, they maintain the additional, addition of street trees and make some exterior changes to the project, including windows on the corner and east and west facades. And it was approved five zero. Uh, on March 8th, the planning commission voted approval six to one to amend the redevelopment plan. And, um, then, uh, currently the redevelopment agreement is being negotiated and, uh, and we're looking at addressing some of those issues that were brought up during the planning commission meeting, how to incorporate them into the agreement. Any questions?
Any questions from the council? Yes. Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Ms. Salem, Salem, pardon me. Um, could you, um, outline, um, just for folks who are listening and watching, what were the issues brought up by the planning commission and? Sure. So there were. And negotiations. Sure. There were, there were a couple of comments, um, that I made note of and I apologize if I didn't include all of them, but, um, some of the broader items included making sure that we have reached out to, uh, the North 27th Street Business Association. There was some outreach. I'm not sure that, um, that, uh, discussion has been held, um, but there was some outreach there and we can continue to work on that effort. Um, there was some questions about the specific park improvements and I can show you the, um, park in question. And, um, so the intent is to work with parks. Um, they currently have a plan for about $35,000 worth of improvements to the park. Uh, the discussion is, um, how much will be available toward that park. Currently discussions are about $20,000 commitment to that park. And so we're still working on that and what exactly those improvements are. Um, that we've had some other discussions about, uh, whether or not this is, um, this supports the complete streets, climate action plan, specific items, and I think I went through some of those already. If you had any further questions on that, I can answer that. And then, um, whether or not, um, the number of affordable units and, um, we've confirmed that there are three affordable units out of the 15. Um, and that whether or not, uh, they would be able to determine the source of that income, whether or not Section 8 will be allowed and those discussions are continuing to be held. And then finally, whether or not students would be allowed to, um, live in the, um, units and I think, um, we wouldn't ask them to discriminate against students living there. Um, whether or not they make special changes to the, um, housing to accommodate students, um, I don't know, um, but there are further discussions about that, whether or not we need to be clearer about, um, allowing, uh, certain types of lease agreements or otherwise, which we typically don't get into, but sometimes are defined by having four bedrooms surrounding a main living area in, and we've talked about that in other student housing projects, that those aren't particularly flexible, um, for families. Um, so the, it, we would want it to be appropriate for families as well as students or anybody else needing to find housing.
Okay. And then I have just one other question. I was, uh, approached by the Clinton Neighborhood Association and I looked a little deeper into this and I guess I'm curious, I mean, it seems like the neighborhood association was really involved and invested, maybe is a better word, in the previous or in the 27th Street Corridor Environs and Redevelopment Plan. And I want to know, to what degree does that plan still have any effect since the owner changed? I mean, this is a plan of the cities, not necessarily who owns the property.
So the, the North 27th Street, uh, redevelopment plan is still the plan that applies to this area and as a TIF project, we would be looking for it to conform with that plan and to meet the comprehensive plan.
I think it's mostly that they're concerned that it was nine units before and now it's grown to 15.
Right. And I might, um, ask David Carey to speak to that item as, uh, R6 versus R4 and B3 type zoning and what would be allowed under that zoning?
Okay. That would be great. And I believe he's coming forward.
Director Carey, would you mind addressing this question while we're on it, please? Thank you.
David Carey, Director of the Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. So I just want to make sure that I heard the question correctly. So are we asking about what the R6 zoning would provide for?
Well, what's the, the degree to which the, uh, the Environs, the 27th Street Corridor Environs and Redevelopment Plan is still in effect, uh, even if, or because there's a change in number of units from nine to 15? And there's just been some concern from the Clinton neighborhood.
And, and I think, I was trying to raise that the R6 is consistent with that redevelopment plan and then maybe David could speak to those, the, what is generally allowed under the R6?
Yeah. So I would agree with what Hallie just said, which is that the R6 would be consistent, is consistent with that plan. Um, the main piece of information that I would share is just so you have that as well in your consideration is that the R6 without the zoning agreement, whether the current agreement says nine units, the proposed agreement would be up to 15, R6 without an agreement like that would allow up to 25 units as far as the density allowance is concerned. So in both cases, including the current proposed agreement, it's less than what would otherwise be allowed in R6.
Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions? Comments? All right. I think, um, we all may have heard from the Clinton neighborhood as well and, um, so parking, um, is at one and a half and as you stated. And, um, I know the neighborhood feels and I'd have to concur, two spaces are always ideal per unit, but perhaps there's not room. Could you talk a little bit about that and then also address a, that their view now, Hallie, is, um, increase parking and then runoff increases in this particular case? Or maybe you can't talk about the storm sewer system, but, um, what's the situation at this particular property?
So I think the, there's two things that sort of butt heads a little bit and that is adding more parking surface area and then stormwater runoff. And so it's trying to make those two, um, work, work together. Uh, the R6 allows for that 1.5, so it's not like we're trying to get to the two, um, spaces. Uh, it is more in terms of how much green space that, and additional, um, area for trees and, uh, that stormwater retention or runoff. So I think that we're still having discussions about how the stormwater runoff gets addressed with this project as part of the redevelopment agreement. Um, and so we can come back to you with a redevelopment agreement, hopefully that addresses some of that concern. Um, but I think when we were talking about affordable housing and adding housing, one of the goals was to minimize the parking requirements associated with that. And I know it's striking a balance between cars parked on the street and not wanting to overrun neighborhoods with cars parked on the street, um, and accommodating cars, um, as part of higher density units. But we feel it does meet that requirement of the 1.5.
If it, um, thank you for that. Because it meets the requirement, does that necessarily eliminate any further discussion of two per?
No, I, I don't think it does. I think what it does is create this question of, is there need for more and what is the balance?
Good, okay.
For, um, other, other uses, other amenities, other... For other uses, other amenities, other stormwater runoff, other items that are important to the project and important to the neighborhood.
Very good. Thank you for that. And yes, Councilwoman Suarez?
Thank you. I just had a question about the Section 8 vouchers. It really struck me when I saw in the minutes of the Planning Commission that Ms. Edgerton asked, will this project accept Section 8 vouchers? And I know Councilwoman Washington kind of elicited that as well, and I feel like that should be part of the discussion when we're looking at TIF projects. And I just wanted to know what comments you might have in general about Section 8 vouchers and affordable housing in terms of these developments?
Right. I think we have, we are doing more and more to ensure that discrimination based on income source does not happen. There are certain challenges associated with requiring Section 8 vouchers, so I don't want to say that we have a blanket requirement, but more of a request to include Section 8 vouchers as part of a potential income source. It's just whether or not this particular project feels that they can meet that requirement or that suggestion. It's not a requirement.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Other questions? I have one, and maybe it's for Director Elliott, but one of the neighborhood's concerns too is transportation by bus as new development goes in, and I don't know if Director Elliott or if you want to stay around. That's great as well. They feel that as we continue to develop in this neighborhood, that perhaps, Director Elliott, there's not the, as every neighborhood probably feels, not enough bus lines and availability, especially when parking becomes limited or street parking is used. Could you address anything in the future or near future that might change for the Clinton Neighborhood in terms of LTU bus lines?
We don't have any immediate plans right now to expand service. As you know, we're still trying to get back up to full service and staffing. We do though, and actually it was just mentioned last week at the Advisory Board, of starting to look into our transit development plan and some of the expansion recommendations made there. So I am hopeful that starting this summer into the fall, we'll be looking at that. But we are currently experiencing some challenges on the funding side, having just had some of our state funding cut about half a million dollars, and some other changes that right now I'm not sure that we'll be able to expand within the current two-year budget, but it is something that we will continue to look at and adjust when we can.
How does it prioritize when the money is there?
Part of the Transit Development Plan really assessed what were the priorities of our riders and in what areas would they like to see service expansion to. And through the TDP, there were, in a priority level, I could not tell you them right off the top of my head, but there were a number of them prioritized by riders and the feedback that we received from them. Not saying that that is set in stone by any means, but that would be the first step that we would look at, is where in the TDP prioritization does that fall? Has anything changed? You know, there could be a number of different things that have changed, whether it's new development, new businesses in the area, that those sorts of factors that we would look at, maybe the ridership numbers would be a factor that we would look at. And then there would be an open discussion through the Startran Advisory Board where the community could come in and give their feedback. And then any route modifications would come with a recommendation from the Advisory Board to, let me think that through, I believe there would be some additional conversations with City Council as well, once that recommendation from the Advisory Board came through. I'm going to have to double check that second part and what the code says, but I believe that would be the second step.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions for either Ms. Salem or Director Elliott or any other from the council? All right. Thank you both very much. Anyone else present to testify on this item? Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Reeves. And Mr. Hunziker.
Madam Chair, excuse me. Madam Chair, members of the council, Mark Hunziker, appearing on behalf of LA Development, or excuse me, LA Real Estate, the developer of this project. I think Hallie pretty well described the project. I don't want to take up a lot of your time doing that, but if there are any questions for us as the developer, we try to answer those.
Thank you for being here. Questions for Mr. Hunziker?
I think there was one question about Section 8 that I think is probably worth addressing.
Yes.
Section 8 is a rather complicated set of regulations and process for administering those. This is a small project, and the expense and difficulty of administering that kind of a program for a project this size is really kind of cumbersome. I have not ever, I've never really broken down where the breakpoint is, but you're probably looking at somewhere around 100 units or more to be able to justify the additional cost. This project is providing three units of affordable housing based on the city's definition, and three units is 20% of this project. I don't recall any other project that is providing 20% of its units to be meeting that kind of criteria. So I mean, they're going as far as possible toward providing affordable units in this project, but I don't think that the, I don't think the Section 8 is likely to be part of that.
Thank you for addressing that. Does that help answer some of your questions? Councilwoman, any other, yes, Councilman McGuinness?
Yes, I see what the three is, a townhomes that are going to be on the side?
Say that again?
The homes that will be on the east side of the project.
Yes.
Okay, and those will be on three separate lots?
I believe that's right. They could be separated into separate ownership.
Correct.
As being on separate lots. I don't believe that's the intent at the moment, but they would be capable of being sold off separately.
Sold off at some point?
Yes.
Okay.
And those are four-bedroom units. All of the apartments are three-bedroom units. So we're providing units of a size that a family could conceivably use, and we're not putting in a bunch of one-bedrooms for students. I think this is a, this is a project that meets all the criteria of the redevelopment plan, and I think meets the other planned criteria that have been mentioned in any of the questioning that was done at the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission, as you know, approved this project by a vote of six to one.
Councilman Bowers?
I just had a question, and because you mentioned, and I'm genuinely curious because I don't know. When Councilwoman Suarez brought up Section 8 housing, you mentioned that there would be an increase in cost that would affect the viability of the project. And one thing that I've been trying to figure out and learn is, what are the extra things that rentals need to have in order to be considered Section 8 appropriate? Does that make sense? Like, what, can you help me understand like what the extra costs would be, or like what would needed to be added on?
I don't think it's a matter of what's in the unit or the physical structure itself. It's really a matter of administering the regulations that go with it and the cost of doing that. And when you deal with that on a small project, it doesn't take very much to make a big difference. If you have a larger project, you can absorb some of those costs. It's just, it's a regulatory issue. It's not a, not a physical structure issue.
Okay. Thank you. That helps red a little bit of structure in my mind.
Other questions? Councilwoman Washington?
It's not really a question, but I believe a few years ago, since I've been on council, we did approve a project that did get TIF funding where 50% of the units were affordable. It was on Q Street, and I can't think of its address. It was, there were 12 units, six were affordable.
Was it Gate Homes?
Yeah. I don't know. I wish I had better recall.
Councilmanship.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Hunziker, for coming forward. I don't know if you can share with me, there's a green space, a pocket park. Does the developer have, do you have any ideas that you can share with me about what you plan to do to help with that? That really is going to be a matter for the Parks Department. What the developer has committed is a $20,000 transfer to the Parks Department to improve that park. What they intend to do with it at this point, I don't know that they've decided or that they even have a plan for it, but it will be a decision by the Parks Department what they do with that money. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Saying none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else present to testify on these items? We are on 5E, and there you are, Mr. Reeves.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm Bob Reeves. I live at 3236 Dudley Street, and you all saw the letter that my wife and I sent. The Clinton Neighborhood Organization Board voted to oppose this project at the time it went to the Planning Commission, and we haven't changed our position on it. I think, I really thank you very much for the questions that you've raised. I think it has covered a lot of the issues that we are concerned about. But starting off, I'd just like to say that a lot of us support the effort that many of the advocates of affordable housing have right now to get this legislation through the Nebraska Legislature to make discrimination based on a legal source of income a protected class. And so if that happens, you're going to have to figure out a way to accept Section 8, and if it means that you can't do a project, then you just wouldn't be able to do it. So we very much support the idea of eliminating this type of discrimination. I saw, we've been looking at the Facebook ads from other projects by this developer, and it is true that the ownership has changed hands, but the management is still through LA Real Estate, or LA Properties. And there are ads that specifically are geared to students saying $500 or less per student, but that's an apartment that's renting for $2,000, and they're implying that they want four students to share that. And I think there are other ordinances that we have to say, are they violating some city ordinance when they have four students sharing a townhouse? It happens all the time, but I'm not sure that's really supposed to be allowed. So that's another issue we have. But the other thing that we've seen in there, I've noticed someone who was wanting to rent one of these duplexes, because there's been many duplexes built in our neighborhood, and they're all four-bedroom units, and we know of some of those that are full of nothing but students, those four-bedroom units. But when someone asks, do you accept Section 8? And they just said right away, no, we don't accept Section 8. So I know people who have just spent, they've looked at dozens and, or maybe, you know, up into the multiple, multiples of 10, looking for a property that, where they can rent that will accept vouchers. It's very difficult to find it in this city. And we just have this feeling that here's another property, or what the really crying need we have in our neighborhood is affordable housing for families, especially families that have several children. And they aren't going to be people who can afford it at market rates, because we have a lot of lower income people. It seems like we have a neighborhood where we have basically a lower-than-average income and a high need for better housing, and a lot of housing that is, has problems that is there now, and we're going to build more buildings in order to get some affordable housing. We're building apartment buildings that have a lot of housing that's not going to be affordable by the people that currently live in our neighborhood. So it's changing the character of the neighborhood in some ways we don't like to see, we would much rather see, when it was nine townhouse units, that was preferable to this. The same developer is completing the apartment complex between 23rd and 24th Street on Vine, I mean, on Y, and earlier had one on Vine Street, squeezing as much into the property as possible. They vacated the alley so that they could have the parking lot even back out into the alley, because they hardly had room to put the parking in. And in that case, they're getting by with, I think, 1.3 spaces per unit because of being, I don't understand why you've made a rule that if you're having affordable housing, you get to have less parking. I mean, we don't know of any families in our neighborhood that don't have two vehicles, and if you have rent to three or four students sharing an apartment, they're each going to have a vehicle, so they're going to fill up the streets with more parking. And I don't think there's any way to get around that. And I think what we were saying in our letter was, we've got to have the public transportation available, change people's habits before we start reducing the parking. And then, of course, my own personal concern is, it is a real conflict. I don't want as much parking as goes going in, because it eats up green space. But we need to, that's why we would rather see nine units rather than 15, because to have adequate parking for this many units, we don't really have enough space on this property, in my opinion, because it ought to be more than 1.5 units of parking and still have room for some green space, and that's not possible. So anyway, I don't know what else. I've got all kinds of things I could have said, but I'm glad you're considering all this. I know it's in conformance with everything. I would like to see changes in some of the policies so that we didn't have this kind of change happening to our neighborhood.
Thank you. Any questions? Comments for Mr. Reeves?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Bob, very much.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else present to testify on this item? Actually, there are two items, 5E and 5F. Yes, would you like to close? Yes.
Just a short rebuttal, and it's really not rebuttal at all. The problem with affordable housing is one that is extremely difficult to solve, and it certainly isn't soluble in the context of a single 15-unit project. Ultimately, the solution is more housing availability across the board, all over the city, and how you get that is a problem that people have been grappling with for a long, long time. More parking is something that everybody would enjoy. Parking costs money. So the more of that sort of thing you add on to the cost of a project, the harder it is to make the units affordable, particularly to low- and moderate-income people. So it's, I don't think Mr. Reeves' argument is with us. It's really just a statement of an obvious fact that we have an affordability problem in Lincoln that needs to be addressed, and it needs to be addressed by encouraging development of more housing units for all income levels.
Appreciate that very much. Yes, Councilman Bowers?
Thank you. Would you mind just taking a few seconds just to respond to Mr. Reeves' concern about violating the no more than three unrelated people living together in the four-bedroom apartments being rented out per room?
I mean, that regulation has been around for as long as I can remember. I've had clients who have been cited by Building and Safety for having more than three unrelated people in their duplex or fourplex-type units. Building and Safety does enforce it. It's not the easiest thing to enforce, obviously, but it's, I mean, when you have students out there, and some of them may be related, which really complicates the issue. You may have siblings in an apartment sharing with a couple of other people that are not related. It's not an easy issue to enforce, but it is enforced- It's not an easy issue to enforce, but it is enforced. And I know specifically of instances where people have been cited for violating it.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. Hanziger. All right. Well, Madam Clerk, I think that concludes the hearing on this item. There's no one else present to testify. Okay, we can move on.
I'll be calling item 5G, approving amendment number one to the interlocal agreement between the City, Lancaster County, and Lincoln Airport Authority to include an indirect air carrier and to increase the minimum target revenue.
Good afternoon again, Chris Connolly, City Law Department. Last summer, when the City and the County and the Lincoln Airport Authority entered into the interlocal to provide minimum revenue guarantees, the Airport Authority did not have an agreement ready to go on what that would look like. And so they have been out working very hard to come up with a structure or an agreement that would work. And it has resulted in the great announcement that we had last week about a number of flights coming in. So as part of that, though, because of the innovation that was used in procuring that agreement, there's a couple of changes that need to be made to the interlocal that we have between the three parties. So there's two things that are before you in this amendment. Number one, we did not have reference to an indirect air carrier in the first agreement. And so the nature of the agreement here is it is an indirect carrier under FAA regulations. And so we would need to make it identify that indirect carriers can be used as part of this minimum revenue guarantee agreement. And the second is, there's an increase in the minimum revenue guarantee amounts. They're being increased from $15,000 for a one-way flight, I believe it is, to $30,000. And this is just the nature of the increase in the costs that the airline industry has experienced in the last year. And so, but this still fits within the purpose and the structure of the interlocal that was passed last year. And so would ask that you approve this amendment. The County Board has already approved it, and so has the Lincoln Airport Authority. So with that, if you have questions, I'll be happy to try and answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Connolly? Comments, all right. Thank you very much. Appreciate all your work on this issue. Thank you. Anyone else present to testify on this item? Item 5G. Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, let's move on.
I'll be calling item 5H, amending Lincoln Lancaster County Air Pollution Control Regulations Standards Proposed Revisions to the Lincoln Lancaster County Air Pollution Control Program Regulations and Standards. Article 1, Sections 3, 4, and 7, Article 2, Sections 1, 2, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, all the way through, I'm sorry, we'll go 1 through 37 and 38, and dependencies 2 and 3. The following will not be revised, Article 1, Sections 1, 2, 5, 6, 8, and 9, Article 2, Sections 3, 4, 30, and 31, and Appendix I.
Good evening, members of the council. Gary Bergstrom supervises the air quality program for the Health Department, 3131O Street. Basically, the changes we're bringing forward to you tonight are to accomplish three different things. First being, we're trying to address changes that the Nebraska Department of Environment and Energy made to their air quality regulations last year, excuse me. They made some very significant changes in both format and content to their regulations, and that affected some of the references that we made in our rules to their regulations. And so we needed to update our regulations really to accommodate those changes and make sure that we're in keeping with both state and federal rules. Second is, when we had you reapprove one of the, I think, Article 2, Section 28 last year, there was inadvertent omission of a previously adopted federal rule, so we're adding that back into the regulations. And then finally, just some general cleanup corrections, you know, grantic formatting, things like that. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Thank you very much. Anyone else present to testify on this item? Item 5H. Anyone else? Seeing none, Madam Clerk? Let's move on to the vote.
We can vote on these items in Section 5. I'll be calling item 5A, approving a grant agreement between the City of Lincoln on behalf of the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department and the Nebraska Environmental Trust for up to $1,345,000. Grant for LLC HD maximizing "Has to Go", Lincoln's Hazardous Waste Center through material reuse for a three-year term. Introduced by Bowers.
So moved. Second.
Seconded by McGinnis. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Shob.
Yes.
Suarez.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 5B is approving an energy services contract between the City of Lincoln and Schneider Electric in the amount of $1,23,124.35 for the Water Resource Recovery Facility Smart Aeration System Project. Introduced by Bowers.
So moved. Second.
Seconded by McGinnis. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Washington.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Suarez.
Yes.
Shob.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 5C is approving the design building contract or the construction management at-risk contract delivery system for all public projects for water, wastewater, utility, or sewer construction, including the Teresa Street Capacity Improvement Project and the Water Supply Development Project for Lincoln Water Systems Water 2.0 provided for in the Political Subdivision Construction Alternatives Act. Introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Washington. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman McGinnis.
Further discussion on this? I'd like to have our city attorney come forward. The reason I would like to change this is twofold. One is, when we first brought this forward, everyone was under the impression that this was for the Teresa Street Plant Project. And I don't know how many of us really knew going forward that this would be something that would be for every city project moving forward. So I would personally like to see it just brought forward that it would be for the Teresa Street Project at this point, which I believe would be a great use for the construction manager at risk. This would be something that would be really done, and it would also bring, once, if that's done and it's done correctly, maybe it's something we move forward that we give them carte blanche and let the city do however they want to do it. But at this point, I know other political subdivisions within the city that helped bring this forward in the first place are not comfortable leaving it just carte blanche, leaving it open at will for the departments to do it. So I don't know how to adjust this, that we could move this forward at this point without wordsmithing it. I mean, there's one way I picked out, but I hate wordsmithing from the dais, you know that. I'd like to probably either delay it or do the wordsmithing. And my wordsmith would be on line 11, and just take out, on the very last word on line 11, it says, "including without limitations", and maybe just take it with limitations of being the Teresa Street Capacity Improvement Project and the Water Development Project for Lincoln Water, the Water 2.0. And we'd be basically saying they would have the right to do it at those two. My other way to do this would be to delay it a week, so we could maybe write this up the right way. Or the third way would be to wait until, and my other concern on this is that the mayor gets to develop the policies and we don't get a shot at him again. So however it gets done administratively, that's the way it goes forward from then on. And we really don't have a say in the policies at some point. Now, my question to you is, is there a way that we could put in here that these policies have to come to us to be approved? Or would you rather, I mean...
It's a resolution. Obviously, the council can put in what it wishes to put in. I mean, is it legal to have the council adopt policies for that? Yes, I suppose it is. It would not be in the ARs, though, because the administrative regulations really are for the mayor.
Okay.
So that's, if you were looking to change something there, that would not be able to happen. But if you certainly, anything else that you wanted to put in to a resolution that would be compliant with the statute, you would be allowed to do. Including the limitation on the projects. If you wanted to limit it to just these two projects for now, and then have it done each time a new project where it's anticipated, tell you would come back to the council and ask to use a CEM at risk? Yes, and I've talked with Ms. Elliott on that, and she's okay with that. Changing the administrative regulations, I think, is more difficult.
Councilman Chilb.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Connolly, so I hear what Mr. McGinnis is saying is, say we voted to pass this now, could we introduce another resolution to amend this in the future? To change those resolutions?
Certainly, yes. Yes, it's just a resolution. It's not an ordinance. And the state statute, really, it doesn't put a lot of parameters around it. So that's, so you can say now that it's okay for all of them, or you can say, no, it's just these, and bring us each one individually. You can say that either way. And then you could change it later on if you wish. From all to limited, or from limited to all.
I ask the question because, much as Mr. McGinnis said earlier, us trying to craft this from the dais is a little challenging. But we could take a week and come back with another resolution, put it on first reading next week, and then do the things that he's interested in doing. That is, procedurally, we could do that.
Yeah, we could do that.
Councilwoman Washington.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Connolly, I wasn't on council in 2010, I believe, when...
2010, yeah.
2010, when this was allowed for vertical construction projects. Could you just, I don't know, sort of suss out or sort of sketch a picture? So this is 13 years ago. This procurement or project delivery, I'm going to learn this, this project delivery method was allowed for building construction in Lincoln.
Correct.
And I'm assuming at that point, the council allowed that
Correct.
without individual projects coming back, asking for permission.
Yeah, the resolution didn't specify one way or the other, because the statute didn't.
Okay, so the resolution didn't specify. And since that time, can you estimate, or maybe Director Elliott, how many projects have we used this delivery method for in buildings?
10 to 15, I would say.
Community, yeah, so city buildings, we've probably used this 10 to 15 times. And earlier, it was already mentioned, there wasn't a, no one's come back to challenge the authority or think that, okay.
Yes, you know, most of the parking garages, all the parking garages that have been done the last 10, 15 years, were all done with CEM at risk. I believe all of them. And of course, Pinnacle Bank Arena, fire stations. I'm sure I'm forgetting some, but that's what we've been doing with it.
And I guess I understand that vertical buildings are different than some utility projects, but when we're looking at these projects that were listed as examples that could be included using this method, it is construction. I mean, it is increasing the size of a facility which has buildings or not buildings in that project description.
Yeah, the state statute had previously prohibited specifically these kinds of utility projects. And then two years ago is when they switched it and said, "For utility projects, you can do it. Other kinds of horizontal projects, such as roads, no, you still can't do that."
Okay.
And that's consistent with what we've seen around the country, too. There are a number of states that do not allow CEM at risk for road construction, but they do for utilities.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilman Bowers.
It sounds like kind of two of the options that we're looking at are, do we amend it now, or do we delay it a week? I think kind of the two things that Richard was looking at. If we delayed it for a week, is that going to mess up any of your timelines for stuff that you have up now? So essentially, like, yeah, if we delayed it for a week, is that going to mess up the timeline? And if it does, then is it better that we, well, depending on whatever Councilman McGinnis wants to introduce, amend it here now?
A week delay would have a tremendous impact. Obviously, the longer, and the longer it takes, the more likely we're going to see price increases. So we wouldn't want to delay it too long, but I don't think one week would set us back too far.
Any, yes, Councilman McGinnis.
Well, one other thing, I just, okay, I'd like to make a motion that we delay this for a week.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded by Councilman Bowers. Discussion, Councilman McGinnis.
Part of my question on that, or thought on that, is that we still need the mayor to develop policies going forward? So is that something that can be done ongoing? It's going to probably take the mayor administrative policies at least a week to develop.
I think so. I mean, we, you know, we've talked about the administrative regulations, but we need to look elsewhere, too. I mean, there are a number of EOs that deal with how we do project delivery systems and that sort of thing. So we need to make sure we've reviewed all that before we come in with something that's fairly comprehensive. And again, the language that we used in here is identical to the one, to the language that was used in 2010. It was directed to the mayor as the executive to develop the procedures for how it would go forward.
Councilman Shob.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Connolly, Ms. Elliott, Councilman McGinnis talked about the development of the procedures. Is that something that would come back to us for a vote of approval?
Typically, it has not, historically, it has not. That has been, again, if we're talking about administrative regulations in particular, that is exclusively the mayor's review.
And are those, are those, that's right grammar? Are those regulations and procedures one-size-fits-all, or they're specific to each project? Do they change?
Well, if you're talking about administrative regulations in particular, there's a number of topics that they cover. And so they may be meant to cover one particular thing, and there may be, perhaps maybe, a related one later on. But in terms of what we have currently, it's mostly sitting in this one AR, AR 29. And it's a lengthy 10 or 12-page regulation on how to go forward. And it follows closely with state statute. And so I'm sure that we would incorporate a lot of what's in state statute as well as it relates to utility construction. But again, we need to look around and make sure that we've covered all the bases, that we're not putting together an AR that says, "This is how you're going to do utility construction going forward", and then see that we're in conflict with perhaps an EO over here that we didn't know about. So that's the kind of research we need to make sure that we're not creating a problem with. Because, again, previously, utility construction had to be done differently. So we need to make sure that we go back and find any regulation or rule of any kind that relates to utility construction, because we know that previously, that's different than vertical construction.
Thank you. That was helpful. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Other comments or questions?
No, I'd just like a week to see if I can deal a little bit on the policies moving forward.
Any other questions or discussion? I would just say I would support the delay if not, since that's on the floor. Or I would have supported the specific narrowing of the resolution. And this is why I was also under the impression from our briefing last week, this just was related to Teresa Street only. And so for that reason, I will support the delay. So with, there's no further comments from the council? Yes.
May I ask, just so I'm clear, I think I understand that the part of the delay is whether or not it's limited to utility projects or which ones. It's still unclear to me about the regulations. Are we to include something about the regulations?
What is the will of the council? What, Councilman McGinnis, what would you like to...
Well, I was just hoping to get some guidance on the future regulations or policies that are about to be developed. And maybe I need to look at the ones that were developed for the vertical to figure out if those are going to be like or different, or how they get put into something that's going linear into the...
I would be happy to send those to you.
And that would be something I'd like to look at.
So that does include the A and R, then, to answer your question?
Yeah, AR 29.
Okay, and that, Councilman, that's what you would like, okay? Good, any other, I'm sorry to not ask, you're good. Director Elliott, do you have any questions for the council before we proceed to the vote?
I think we're good.
It's only a one week. Madam Chair.
One week, yes.
One week delay.
That's my understanding, yes.
Yes, one week.
April 10th, with no, yes, no public hearing? Is that correct, Councilman?
Yeah, no public hearing.
Okay, all right. Well, Madam Clerk, is that as clear as mud? All right, please proceed to the vote.
Washington.
Washington.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Suarez.
Yes.
Chob.
No.
Ward.
Yes.
Motion carried, five one.
Okay, let's move on.
Reading item 5D, miscellaneous 23002, application of Director of Urban Development Department to declare the 56th, 70th, and Fletcher redevelopment area generally located between 56th Street on the west, Salt Creek on the north, and 84th Street on the east, and Fletcher Avenue on the south, blighted and substandard, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
I thought we had a motion on this already?
Oh, excuse me, yes, that is correct. I do apologize. We had already acted on this, I invoked on this item. I'll move on to item 5E. Comprehensive Plan Conformance 23001, application of Urban Development Director to review asked to conformance with the 2050 Lincoln-Lancaster Comprehensive Plan. A proposed amendment to the North 27th Street Corridor and Environs Redevelopment Plan to add the 27th and Star Redevelopment Project for construction of a 12-unit apartment building, three townhomes, and associated parking on the property generally located at the northeast corner of North 27th and Star Streets, introduced by Bowers.
So moved. Second.
Seconded by McGinnis, further discussion? Saying none, please call the vote.
Chob.
Yes.
Suarez.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Motion carried, six zero. Item 5F, is approving the First Amendment to the Development and Conditional Zoning Agreement between the City and LA Real Estate LLC for the property generally located at 2716 Star Street, 2718 Star Street, and 1420 North 27th Street, introduced by Bowers.
So moved. Second.
Seconded by McGinnis, further discussion? Councilman Chob.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to say that I appreciate Mr. Reeves and the neighborhood coming forward and giving us some things that we need to talk about and work on for the future. We do need more housing in our community to help stabilize the rates and the rents. We need to talk about some other things, too, and I look forward to having those conversations in the near future.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other discussion? Councilman Bowers.
I would just echo what Councilman Chob said. As usual, he was very articulate in his words, so I would just echo that.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Bowers. Anyone else?
Ditto.
Agree, ditto here, all right.
Should I ditto?
Yes, then we'll be unanimous. And Councilman Suarez ditto's, okay.
We're copyrighting.
What? We're all in agreement.
You have an NIL on that?
No, I don't have one.
Thank you, council. All right, Madam Chair, please call the vote on 5F.
Washington.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Suarez.
Yes.
Chob.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Motion carried, six zero. Item 5G, approving amendment number one to interlocal agreement between the City, Lancaster County, and Lincoln Airport Authority to include an indirect air carrier and to increase the maximum target revenue, introduced by Bowers.
So moved. Second.
Seconded by McGinnis, further discussion? Saying none, please call the vote.
Chob.
Yes.
Suarez.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Motion carried, six zero. Item 5H, amending Lincoln-Lancaster County Air Pollution Control Regulations and Standards Proposed Revisions to the Lincoln-Lancaster County Air Pollution Control Program Regulations and Standards, Article 1, Sections 3, 4, and 7; Article 2, Sections 1, 2, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 32, 33, 34, 35, 36, 37, and 38. And dependencies 2 and 3, the following will not be revised, Article 1, Sections 1, 2, 5, 6, 8, and 9; Articles 2, Sections 3, 4, 30, and 31, and Appendix I, introduced by Bowers.
So moved. Second.
It's a tie. Seconded by McGinnis. Further discussion? Saying done, please call the vote.
Bowers.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Suarez.
Yes.
Chob.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Motion carried, six zero. That concludes our Section 5 public hearing resolutions.
Okay, we're at the two-hour mark and I know some of you have been waiting a very long time, but we're going to take a short 10-minute break. If we could please reconvene at 5:00 after 5:00? That would be helpful. So let us recess till 5:05.
The Lincoln City Council will now reconvene. And Madam, whoops, we'll wait for Councilman Schob here. Thank you for your patience. And we're ready when you are, Madam Clerk.
Next on our agenda is Section 6, Public Hearing Orders, Second Reading and Related Resolutions. Item 6A, Amending Lincoln Municipal Code, Section 2.76.040, Definitions to revise the definitions for Department Head and Immediate Family, and to add a definition for Personnel Department by amending Section 2.76.380, Six Leave with Pay to allow probationary employees to use sick leave, by amending Section 2.76.395, Vacation Leave with Pay to allow probationary employees to use vacation leave by amending Chapter 2.76 Personnel System to add a new section number 2.76403 entitled Paid Parental Leave to allow for full-time and part-time probationary and regular, unrepresented employees to be eligible to receive up to six weeks of paid parental leave following the birth, starting a placement, or through an adoption or foster care of a child, children.
Good afternoon, how are you guys? Barb McIntyre, 555 South 10th Street, Human Resources Director. Oh, 575, gotta change my address, I'm in the building next door now. Just gonna start, there's a couple different code pieces in here, so the first one I'm gonna highlight is definitions, and what we've done is something you've seen us doing in all our code that we bring forward, is really trying to go to that more general-neutral language for what immediate family is. So you're gonna see that we took out things like husband, wife, and went to spouse. So just making our definitions, general neutral is a big change there. The next two sections of code are 276830, Sick Leave, and that is really to make it so our probationary employees, our new employees, as they accrue sick leave, or on 276395 vacation, as they accrue that vacation, anything they've accrued that's in their bank is available to them to use in that first six months. It is really hard to go six months without any time off except for two personal convenience holidays. We all have families today, we all have things in our personal lives that we need to attend to, so it's really our intent to be more employee-focused and employee-friendly with those changes, and help our new employees not have to choose between their personal lives and their new job. And then the last code change is that 276403, which is that Paid Parental Leave. And just real quick, I'm gonna just walk you through the key provisions of that, so it is the intent to provide six weeks of paid parental leave for our new parents for birth, adoption, or fostering. If the employee does happen to be part-time, then it'll be a prorated portion of that. They can use it within 12 months of a qualifying event, so they have an entire year to take that leave. They do need to use that leave before they use their sick leave or vacation, but if they expend that and they still need some additional time off, sick leave or vacation would come next. This does run concurrently with FMLA, and I think those are kind of the key things. So again, it's available for our probationary and our regular employees, unrepresented to start, and as we negotiate with our unions, this will be something we would be inviting them to talk to us about, to see if they're interested in adding it to their contracts.
Thank you, Director. Questions for Director McIntyre? Comments? Yes, Councilman McGinnis.
Well, thank you, Director. You did answer most of my questions, let me just kinda ask it again. You said the six-week parental leave must be used within 12 months of the occurrence?
Of the qualifying event, so...
A qualifying event?
The qualifying event would be a birth, or starting an adoption process. We do know that sometimes the start of that adoption process can take a very long time, and it requires sometimes significant time off. So it's whatever qualifying event it is, it could be a start of a foster process, an adoption process, or the birth of the child, so...
So they could use this intermittently? They could go one day off?
Yes.
Two days work, three days off?
And we really did that intentionally, because we have a lot of situations where a new child doesn't come directly into the home, right? And in those situations, intermittent leave is necessary to help support those parents as they're trying to balance between work and the commitment to the new child and their lives. Babies end up in NICUs and don't come home right away, or adoption processes can take a long time before a child comes into the home. So we really wanted them to have this bank of time available during those kinds of things.
Okay, and it's a 12 months?
It's a year, yeah.
A 12-month period.
It's a 12-month period that they have to use the time. Correct. Do you have more questions?
Yeah, one more quick question. So if they leave during that time, do they get paid for those time off? As a sick leave payment?
No, it's not an accrued time like sick leave or vacation, so nothing would get paid out.
Okay.
Other questions? Comments? Yes, Councilwoman Suarez.
I just wanted to make a couple comments. I really applaud the city leadership in providing these parental and family-friendly policies. That'll, of course, impact retention and possibly recruitment, and I appreciate the flexibility that you've afforded new parents. This is for unrepresented employees, as you mentioned, but I do hope that this, it will be included in represented contracts as the process unfolds. I believe it's so important. To me, this is a support of our city employees, and most importantly, it's an investment in the lives of our young children. And we know that the earlier we can start to support our young children, the healthier they will be, which in turn will have a healthier community. So I really, again, wanna just applaud your leadership and the city leadership in this work, because it is critically important. So thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Director. Thank you, Councilwoman. All right, seeing no further questions? Thank you. Others present to testify? Thank you, Doctor. Thank you for your patience today.
You're welcome. And thank you, councilmembers, for hearing this important discussion. I am Stacy Blyker. I'm a retired pediatrician, practiced in general pediatrics in Lincoln for 35 years, but continue to be involved with other issues regarding childrens and our, children in our communities. I am thrilled to have the city of Lincoln being a standard for other employers in our communities and the state around us to support families. As a pediatrician, I think, you know, we've really seen the family unit fall apart. When I was in practice, I had moms that were going back to work before they were physically able to, or emotionally able to, often not having their support partner at home with them, because they didn't have any leave and they couldn't afford to have both of them off work without getting pay. As you said, Councilwoman, we know that the start these kids and these families get from the beginning has a huge impact on the resiliency of the child, how they're gonna function as community members. Other studies, actually pairing this with our universal home visitation is a wonderful way to, you know, you decrease ER visits, you're gonna decrease the cost of health insurance, escalating costs for city employees, those sorts of things. It just helps that family become a unit from the beginning, or if they've got a NICU baby, that they can put that off more so when the baby's ready to get home. I frequently saw families that used all their vacation time, all their personal days, to have the time off and receive payment after they had babies, sometimes need more, including families with triplets and other multiples, where, you know, gosh, six weeks is nothing when you've gotta figure out, how do I build my life around three babies? But I find this very commendable, I think it speaks long-term. If we, as a community, can be more and more supportive of families, we're gonna have more successful young adults ahead of us. Can I answer any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Blyker. Questions? Comments? Councilman Bowers?
I just have a statement more than anything else. Dr. Blyker is an expert in her field. Thank you so much for coming out and sharing your wisdom with us, and if Dr. Blyker says it's a good thing, then it is a good, it's a great thing.
As we know.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bowers.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Others present that would like to testify? Thank you for your patience, Kathy. I guessed totally wrong.
That's all right. My name is Kathy Remacher, my address is 3220 Sheridan Boulevard, but I'm here on behalf of the Commission on Women and Gender. I serve as the Chair for the Commission, and the Commission is tasked to make recommendations, suggestions, and advice to the mayor and the city council on behalf of women and FOM in our community. So I'm here to read a statement on behalf of the Commission on Women and Gender. "We are long past due for significant paid leave policies in our workplaces. According to Moms Rising, right now only 17% of Americans have access to paid family leave through their employer. The benefits to providing paid leave are many. A quarter of all poverty spells for Americans are because of having a baby. It has been proven that paid parental leave improves household economic security for families, employee retention increases, and it helps to attract employees. Increased productivity, improved mental health, and morale are also benefits of paid parental leave. Paid family leave has even been shown to reduce infant mortality by as much as 20%. Without paid leave, we will continue to see one in four mothers back at work within 10 days of having a baby. Paid family leave combats poverty, gives children a healthy start, and lowers the wage gap between women and men by providing essential structural supports to balance family and work. If our goal is to support families and keep young people in our city, this population, or this provision is a step in the right direction." I thank you very much for hearing us, and really, again, would like to second the idea that this is long overdue and sets a really important standard for our city.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments? Kathy?
I just would...
Yes, Councilwoman Suarez?
Thank you. I just wanna say thank you, Kathy. I know you've been a long-term, you know, supporter of education and a public servant, and I really appreciate the work you're doing, and thank you for being patient as you waited a few hours to come forward. Thank you.
Well, and the young woman that was with me is also on the Commission, and she was here to read her statement, but she had to leave because of childcare. So we all realize the importance of all of those kinds of things. And I do wanna take a moment of personal privilege and say thank you very much to all of you for all of your service. This is my swan song. I am finished as the Chair on the Commission on Women and Gender, and I appreciated very much all the support of the mayor and the city council.
Thank you very much, Kathy, for your service. Councilman Schob, would you like to say something?
Yes, I do. I was gonna say, doing this is a good thing, but then hearing the announcement kinda took my breath away. Thank you so much for your efforts to make our community more egalitarian, I appreciate you more than you know. Thank you.
Thank you again. Please come on forward.
Hello, my name is Amber Dingwell. Address 134 South 13th Street, Suite 700, here in Lincoln, representing both my employer monolith, and I also serve on the board for the Lincoln Human Resource Management Association. We are a nonprofit that has been here in the Lincoln community for over 30 years, and we have over 300 HR professionals as current members. I'm here today to just speak in support of the city of Lincoln adopting this Paid Parental Leave program. As we've heard, more than half of Americans today, both mothers and fathers of infants, are in our labor force. Paid parental leave is designed to help these new parents both balance their work and their family responsibilities, providing them not only with the time off, but the economic security that they need while allowing them to care for their newborn or the child that is new to their home. Given the prevalence of working parents, the impact of unemployment being the lowest it's been in many years, more employers have been called upon to reimagine their benefits and the leave programs that they're offering to employees. This has resulted in employers across the nation extending paid time off for bonding, family caregiving, as a way to compete for the talent needed here in the 21st century. Emily Dickens, the SHRM, the Society for Human Resource Management, who is the Corporate Secretary, Chief of Staff, and Head of Government Affairs, shared in a 2020 letter of support for paid family medical leave to the U.S. Department of Labor, showing that 35% of employers offer maternity leave, 27% offer paid paternity leave, and offering these benefits have many strategic benefits. These include attracting top talent, retaining employees, improving employees' health and wellness, and leading to increased employee engagement. Personally, in the last 10 years, I have created, administered, and participated in employer-sponsored parental leaves at two different organizations here in Lincoln. Because of my unique experience in both the administration and leveraging those programs, I can really confidently validate these statistics. Simply stated, the city of Lincoln's Paid Parental Leave provides families with both financial security, job protection, but also this time with their family that is not replaceable in any capacity. Beyond that, it bolsters employees' productivity, morale, and re-engages them in the value and mission, which makes it easier for the city to retain top talent. I applaud the city as they work towards supporting families and the community with their employees. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any questions? Comments?
I think I'll take the time to make a comment if I may.
Yes, Councilwoman Washington?
I just, I, thank you, and thank everyone who's come to speak on this. I want Lincoln to be, the city of Lincoln to be the employer of choice, and I also want the city of Lincoln to lead and show other employers that this is possible. I wouldn't have been able to, I'm so thankful, I should say, I'm so thankful that I had the ability to stay at home for a long period of time. That bonding moment, weeks, months, were really, really critical and important, and I would wish that for every single family in Lincoln. Thank you.
Thank you, Amber. All right. Anyone else present that would like to testify on this item? Anyone else? All right. Director, is there anything you'd like to close with?
Just wanna say that I'm honored that I was the one who got to bring this forward. It makes a huge difference in the lives of our employees, and when we support our employees and show them how much we care about them, that gets paid for, and how they deliver to our, the public that we serve and our communities, and it's just really important as we try to compete and retain our talent, and really show people that we can be a competitive employer, we can offer these kinds of benefits that traditionally you have not seen in government. So I just feel like it's a great step forward to help us attract that needed talent and open our doors to that talent that's just emerging, to see us as an employer and a possibility for them when they're considering their careers. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much, Director. Appreciate it. All right. Let's move on.
I'll be calling Item 6B, Approving the Lease Agreement Between the City of Lincoln and the Nebraska Department of Administrative Services on behalf of Health and Human Services for the lease of space by Health and Human Services at 1330 N Street, Suite A and B, from February 22nd, '23 through December 31st, 2029.
Johonce Christie, 555 South 10th, City Attorney. I think that the person who was here, I think he had to leave, but this is another one of the lease agreements for the American Job Center.
Okay.
It's similar to the other agreements that came before.
All right. Are there questions for Mr. Christie about this lease agreement? Do you know if this will be, is this the last one? I'm just curious, I'm not...
Um, well, I know that... Isn't there an...
One more.
I don't know for sure.
I just know, just, all right. Well, thank you for presenting on his behalf.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. Any other people present? It's kind of emptying out. Unless Chad wants to come back up? No, I'm kidding. Not yet, okay. I know. All right. Seeing none, we'll move on.
I'll be calling Item 6C, Amending Lincoln Municipal Code, Chapter 19.03...
I'll be calling Item 6C, amending Lincoln Municipal Code Chapter 19.03 Fire Code by amending Sections 19.03022, 1903084, 1903092, 1903100, 1903108, 1903122, 1903190, 1903250 by repealing Section 1903.086 and by adding new Sections 1903103 and 1903211 to be consistent with the International Fire Code.
You've got us.
And that is awesome. Chad Blaha, Building and Safety, good evening, councilmembers, Madam Chair. Thanks for hanging in there. This ordinance brings forward three categories of changes to our Lincoln Fire Code. First category is more of a cleanup item and probably could have been included with the bulk of the items, but we decided to keep all the Fire Code stuff together. Like I said, it's the bulk of this ordinance is cleanup-type items. They're intended to align the current LMC language with the language that's in the currently adopted International Fire Code, so just so that they match terminology. Second category is changes that are essentially cleanup, that match historical and current practices. Examples of these are, we have, the term apprentice was left out of registrations and their expiring terms from the last time we did a code adoption. We are removing the section that has language allowing for partial payment for the permits that are issued through the Fire Code. The reason for this is then the, the code's been there for a while. In the five years that our current Fire Code review engineer has been here, we've not had anybody ask about that offer. It adds complexity to our administering of the permits, trying to track the partial permits and waiting for them to get the full payment in before we issue it. So everybody just pays upfront as they apply for it at this point. There is a provision that if we haven't incurred any cost in terms of time for the review process, they can request a refund for that fee. But that's that change. The other clarifying changes for practices, we are, it looks like we are eliminating liquor establishment permits and activities. That is not what we're doing. Currently, our municipal code lists liquor establishment as one of our operational permits. We do not issue an operational permit for that. We do the inspection on behalf of the Liquor Commission, and so we are not removing our involvement. All we're doing is making it more accurate to what we actually do, and so that's why that is in there. The third type of change is the substantial change. This has to do with tents. There were tents and tent permits. There were some tent contractors that approached us, and I believe a couple, a couple of you councilmembers, last year about making some changes. We looked at that carefully. It centered around the size of tents that were required to get permits in residential backyards for graduations, you know, smaller wedding receptions, whatever they, you know, a homeowner in a one- or two-family lot wanted. And so we looked at that request, and we moved forward with a change to increase that threshold from 400, we doubled it to 800 square feet as a threshold to needing a permit for, in any setting, including the ones and twos. But we just have that exception in the ones and twos that it's got to be more than 800 feet. The only other change in there, it also looked like we eliminated the need for the tent contractors to pull the permits. We didn't eliminate that. It just was part of that cleanup where we're moving some of the changes around. So that's kind of a net zero, a net zero change within this ordinance. And so that's a summary of the changes within the ordinance in front of you, so if you've got any questions, I'll, and I have Chief Inspector Bill Moody, Chief Fire Inspector Bill Moody here, and Megan Talbert, she's our Fire Plans Review Engineer that does most of this and told me what to say.
Now we know, the heavy lifting. Great, thank you, Director. Any questions for Director Blaha? Yes, Councilman McGinnis?
I gotta ask you a question, right? Again, tell me why you're submitting or removing that the applicant can only submit partial payment?
To our knowledge, in, I mean, in Megan's time here, there's not been one request to use that option in the last five years that she's been here. There was somebody here that was here for 40 years before that. I don't know what his answer would be, but there's, the fact that it's not used, and if it were to be used, it adds complexity on our end. Complexity means more time before the, you know, more chances for time delays with getting it issued, and it's a preference to move forward with that item.
Your practice, oh, I'm sorry. She probably wants me to make sure I got my mic on. But your practice is to refund the permit if it hasn't been reviewed?
If we haven't incurred a cost in terms of time reviewed or time inspected, we refund them.
Okay. Answers that question.
Councilwoman Washington? That's all yours.
Director Blaha, thank you for looking at the tents issues. I know that that was something that we discussed last year with the former councilperson Raybold, and I would very much love to have the quick primer described, because I think that some of the folks reading this, the code changes, could get just a smidge confused. It starts on page two, near the bottom, by suggesting that the person who is a tent company applies for the permit, and which is the case for a certain size tents? Or is it for all tents?
All tents, all tents requiring permits.
All tents requiring-
All tents requiring permits. And that doesn't, that requirement is unchanged. It's just moved, moving to a different location within the code. You approved that whenever that was, when we adopted the last Fire Code.
Okay. So all tents requiring permits, yes, the tent company applies for that, but the tents that don't require permits are lower down, I mean, I'm sorry, further back in the changes, and so people may go, we-
I see what you're saying, yeah.
So the quick primer that says, if you're hosting a graduation party-
Yes, okay. The main, maybe I should have led with the bigger ticket item. Yes, the tents on lots, on properties that are intended for one- and two families, so that's a single-family lot or a duplex lot, the threshold for requiring a tent permit is more than 800 feet, more than 800 square feet tent. And if you happen to have a yard that can handle something bigger, you can have a second 800-square-foot tent if it's 12 feet apart from the first without a permit, so.
So you could host your really large graduation, now I'm thinking, two 800-square-foot tents would be a really large graduation party, but you could rent those without having to get a permit?
Yes.
And rent and install them in your yard for a day?
Yes, yep. The tent company, they need not, the tent company need not obtain a permit for us, from us to put it up.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilman McGinnis?
You answered the liquor for me. I guess part of it in the registration was for apprentices. Page 15, line 16. Was that, was that a typo, or is it meant to be?
Oh, the hyphens?
The hyphens.
There's a number of hyphens in here. I have not had a chance to ask. They don't serve a purpose other than just being there.
Okay.
I think we could-
Clean those up.
Probably clean those up.
Look at our next vote. And then the other question I had was the Fire Code Task Force. And Fire Code Task Force shall consist of the Fire Code Official, who's the chairperson, and the additional representatives of the Bureau of Fire Prevention, as requested by the Fire Code Official. Do we have a Fire Code Task Force?
Yes.
Okay, who, and did they review this?
They did not review this. We did not feel that this was an item that would need to be brought through that entire review process. That's just a decision that we made. They are, you know, they're an advisory committee that we hold in high esteem, but we also value their time. They're professionals in the community, and we felt that this was one since we're-
Possible sometime we could get a copy of who's on the Fire Code.
You can get a copy anytime they're on. In fact, they would be on, file on the mayor's website, I believe, mayor's office website.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions from this issue? Okay. Thank you very much, Director.
I'm going to keep Bill here for a little while.
Yeah.
Come back next week.
All right. Thank you all very much. Next item, Madam Clerk?
Item 6C is amending Lincoln Municipal Code Chapter 19.03 Fire Code by amending Sections 19.03022, 19.03.084, 19.03092.
I think-
Oh, I read this one.
Yep, we just did this one.
Excuse me, I was trying to keep Chad here longer.
You're fine.
Excuse me. Item 6D, amending Sections 20.06.210, 20.08.250, 20.08.390, and 24.12.425 to clean up and correct outdated language in the building code and the Lincoln plumbing code.
So I will just, at the outset, I believe I'm here on the rest of the items. These are considered code cleanup items, which are just generally characterized as technical amendments that are meant to be clarifications, non-controversial, non-substantive items, corrections. So Item 6D just has some cleanup to some, cleanup and correction to some outdated language, and I believe that it references the incorrect chapter, and you should be able to see it highlighted in there. It's just a couple changes in there.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from our city attorney? All right. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, let's move on. Are there any other persons outside the room that we cannot see that may be interested in commenting? Oh, investigator, yes.
Investigator.
Are you concerned about the plumbing? Yes, yes. Councilwoman Washington?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, and City Attorney Christie, was that the extent of the rest of the items on public review?
We're going to have to read each one individually.
Yes.
When he said he was up here representing the rest of them, I was like-
Well, right, but I, I'm going to do them individually.
All right, thank you. I didn't want to miss any one of them.
We promise you won't. We're here for the, for all. Okay. So seeing no other persons interested in commenting on 6D, let's move on, Madam Clerk, please.
Item 6E, amending Lincoln Municipal Code Section 8.20.030, definitions in Sections 8.20.120, food establishment, exemptions to be consistent with the Nebraska Food Code changes, approved on August 6, 2020.
Item 6E, I believe, uses new language that was, again, to be consistent with the Nebraska Food Code changes, as Madam Clerk read. I think it's time-temperature control for safety food instead of potentially hazardous. That's the change.
Any questions, comments? Anyone else present who we cannot see that would like to testify on this item? Seeing no one coming forward, let's move on.
Item 6F, amending Chapter 10.26 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to arterial streets to amend Highway 2 references to Nebraska Parkway.
As we know, it is no longer called Highway 2.
Makes those changes very good. Questions, comments?
Although some of us might still call it Highway 2.
For a while, yeah.
Well, my compliments to the person who went through this, went through all of city ordinances to find out where we referred to Highway 2.
Correct. All right. Anyone else present to comment on this item? Seeing no one coming forward, let's move on.
Item 6G, amending Section 5.52.070 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to shared mobility operator selection to amend the number of shared mobility operator permits allowed from two to three.
So this was something that the council obviously already approved. This was just one section of the code that mistakenly got left out, so.
Okay, very good. Questions? Yes, Councilwoman Suarez?
I have a question. I just didn't know what a shared mobility operator-
Those are commonly also referred to as scooters.
I asked for Elliot, and she said scooters.
Oh.
Good question. It took me about six months to know what that meant. Good question. Thank you. Councilman McGinnis?
And I do like that it's still in there that may include three, so she doesn't have to choose three. Currently, we have two under contract, right? One did not come back.
Yes, yeah, just two.
Yeah.
Good questions, comments? Any others? All right.
Next, I can't wait.
Any others people present that would like to comment on Item 6G? Seeing no one come forward, let's move on, please.
Item 6H, amending Lincoln Municipal Code Section 4.62.025 Investment Upplan Assets to revise the language to reflect that the plan holds assets other than those listed in Nebraska State Revenue, or State Statute 30-3209.
Yes, now this is technical change, which if you would like to know specifics, I'm probably not the person, but the statute uses, or our code currently says that is outlined per state statute, what can be, how the assets can be invested and reinvested. However, the statute doesn't actually outline it, it just says what is permitted, and so we have changed it to reflect that it is permitted rather than outlined by state statute. And this was obviously at the request of the staff that deals with this. And then we just have a reference that says as amended, so that when this particular statute is amended, make it clear that we're still following that, so.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments? All right. Seeing none, are there others that are going to come forward? I have to ask. You never know.
You do.
I do. You never know. All right. Seeing none, let's move on.
Item 6I, amending Lincoln Municipal Code Chapter 9.16, offenses against public decency to remove the probation of gambling by repealing Sections 9.16.010, 9.16.40, 9.16.050, 9.16.060, 9.16.070, 9.16.080, 9.16.090, and 9.16.100.
Believe it or not, we still had gambling as a crime in the city, and as we know, that is no longer the case.
Our decency.
Yes.
Councilman McGinnis?
Yeah.
Councilwoman McGinnis?
Very broad, unbridled.
A question, though. We deleted everything in this. Why wouldn't we delete the whole, just wondering why? I mean, every section in 9.16 or whatever it is has been deleted. Section 1, 9.16.01.
And so if I, sometimes we don't have the whole-
9.04.
Let me see if-
5. 9.
So there are still other things within 9.16 in the code that we just don't, that we don't have.
We'll still say Section 8, that section on 9.16.10 of the municipal code, be, and the same is hereby repealed. Those lines will stay in, right?
Read it again one more time and show me where you're-
I was looking like page 5, 14, and 15, and 9, and 10, and 1, and 2.
Yes.
I'm just wondering if there's a legal reason we want to keep those sections in there. Okay. I just want- Okay, I just wondered.
Oh, I see what you're saying, Matt. It just said, oh, that language that's actually, okay. I can, well, I could tell you that a lot of times with statutes, they usually reference to show that it's been repealed.
Okay.
I wouldn't know that I would stand here and say that it is a legal requirement, but it certainly, there's a record to see what happened. Certainly helpful, and at least for a little while, right? It's certainly helpful when people go look at the statutes, that they can see that it has been repealed.
All right. Any other persons wishing to testify? I'm sorry, were you?
No, I was just saying, thank you.
Anyone else present? Seeing none, let's move on.
Item 6J, amending Section 1.24.010, the Lincoln Municipal Code, relating to penalty for violations to remove the additional penalty of license or permit revocation, cancellation, or forfeiture.
This is just in the general penalty section of our code, and we are removing this language as it is unnecessary and redundant, and at times actually can lead to some confusion.
Questions, comments? All right, thank you. Anyone else present to testify on this item? Seeing none, let's move on.
Item 6K, amending Chapter 9.28 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to offenses by or against minors as it relates to the use of tobacco by increasing the age from 19 to 21 to be congruent with state law.
Yes, tobacco is now pursuant to state law, 21. It used to be, well, I mean, it was 18 at one point, right? So, but now it is 21, so.
Okay. Any questions, comments? All right, seeing, anyone else present to testify on this item? Seeing no one, come forward, let's move on.
Item 6L, amending Lincoln Municipal Code, Section 10.12.030, Traffic Control Signal Legend, to add green bicycle, yellow bicycle, and red bicycle to the signal legend by amending Section 10.14.220, turns restricted at intersections with automatic signals to clarify the language.
And so we did not have green bicycle, yellow bicycle, and red bicycle in the signal legend in our code, while you may have seen them outside. Yep, we did not have them in the code. So the first thing we're doing is putting it in to the code, into our signal legend, as it's referred to. And then there is another section which talks about when someone is allowed to turn on a one-way street with the red arrow. We clarified that.
Questions, comments? All right. Anyone present to testify on this item? Seeing none, let's move on.
Item 6M, amending Lincoln Municipal Code, Sections 4.54.020, 4.54.030, 12.04.010, 12.04.020, 12.08.120, 12.08.130, 12.08.210, 12.08.220, 12.08.330, 12.24.010, 12.24.020, 12.24.030, 12.24.060, 12.28.010, 12.28.020, 12.28.030, and 12.32.010, to update, make clear, and correct typographical errors as it relates to the Community Forestry Advisory Board, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and the Parks Department.
So what this does is really, it clarifies and updates language regarding the organization and duties of the Community Forestry Advisory Board, and it also amends and clarifies, amends, clarifies, and updates language regarding the Park and Recreation Advisory Board and the Parks Department. Excuse me. I don't know that I'm gonna go line by line. I will if someone asks me to, but...
No, no. Questions or comments, line-by-line requests? I did not think so, but double-checking, okay.
I'm here if you need it.
All right. Anyone else present to testify on this item? All right, seeing none, let's move on.
Item 6N, is amending Lincoln Municipal Code, Sections 2.25.040, 4.20.020, 4.20.030, 4.20.040, 4.20.050, to update and make clear the library board's duties.
And this is an item that we're actually requesting that it be withdrawn, and that is the request of the Library Department Director.
Yeah, or what's the public hearing call?
I think we should see if anyone else wants to speak on it, and then I would ask that it be withdrawn.
Is there anyone present that would like to testify on this item?
We...
Seeing none. Councilman Shoeb, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Seeing no one coming forward, I'd like to make a motion that this item be withdrawn from today's agenda.
Is there a second? Councilman McGinnis has seconded. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, will this item come back to us at some point?
So we're asking that it be withdrawn, not put on pending or anything like that. It is possible that it will come back. If you remember, I mean, we recently had a new library director. I think he would like to talk to the board, and this is, sometimes the code cleanup items are from previous, and they get carried over. And so I think he would just like some time to, and I think he may be considering other code cleanup items as well. So it is unclear exactly if it will be coming back for sure.
All right, well, thank you. I can understand why the new library director would like a chance to actually review this with the library board before having it come forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else present to testify on this item? Seeing no one coming forward, let's move on.
I'll call the roll on the withdrawal.
Yes, thank you. Oh, thank you, yes.
Suarez?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Shoeb?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, 6-0. Item 6O, amending Lincoln Municipal Code, Section 2.02.020, Departments of the City design to delete partners from Director of Aging Partners by amending Chapter 2.40, Aging Partners Department to rename the chapter Department of Aging, and the amending any references to aging partners throughout the chapter to reflect Department of Aging for consistency.
And so what we're doing is we're changing to Department of Aging. I think it was inconsistent in certain places, and I think we're just trying to be consistent, and we'd like to clean that up. So, and obviously, this is the request of the Department of Aging.
Any questions, comments? Again, not a showstopper, but I was just, I mean, it's, I guess I can call Randy. Yeah, I'll talk to Randy. Just wondering, like, if there's brand changes and everything.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, okay, I'll talk to Randy. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right. Any, I'm getting, the hour's getting late, I'm losing my rhythm, sorry. Is there anyone else present that would like to testify on this item? All right, seeing none. We are.
Yeah, that concludes Section 6. We'll move on to Section 7, Ordinance's Third Reading and Related Resolutions, Item 7A, amending Lincoln Municipal Code, Section 2.76.335, appointments to positions in the classified service to modernize the language and to allow more flexibility for the hiring process, introduced by Washington.
So moved. Second.
Seconded by Suarez. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote. But actually, I have, Councilman Shoeb, I have your initials by this item.
I was because he was gonna introduce it.
I'm so sorry.
Oh, that's right, you were not at Directors.
7A?
I did, mhm, I think for introducing because Councilman, these were, Councilman Beckus' items.
Oh, that's only, but it doesn't matter.
Oh, this one specifically was introduced by Councilwoman Washington. We delayed it for that one week. So this is actually introduced by Washington. The remaining is introduced by Beckus.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right. So are we ready? Are we okay to call the vote?
I think we are.
Okay. Please call the vote. Thank you.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Suarez?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, 6-0. Item 7B, amending Section 12.08.270 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to alcoholic liquor prohibited, exceptions and permit requirements to allow a tenant in the active living center and condominium associated to obtain a liquor license on the premises of the James Snyder Trail Center and the adjacent park premises between P Street and Q Streets, introduced by Beckus.
So moved.
Seconded by McGinnis. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Suarez?
Yes.
Shoeb?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, 6-0. Item 7C, Change of Zone 06075B, application of Olson to amend the existing Wilderness Commons planned unit development by expanding the covered area by .77 acres and to increase the number of allowed dwelling units from 401, 401 to 468, and to adjust the maximum height for multifamily to 65 feet with associated waivers on the property generally located at 40th Street and Wilderness Hills Boulevard, introduced by Beckus.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Washington. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Suarez?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Shoeb?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, 6-0.
Seconded by McGinnis. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Shoeb?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Suarez?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, 6-0. Item 7E is approving the lease agreement between the City of Lincoln and Life Skills Connection, Inc., for the lease of space at 1330 N Street Suite A and B from February 20th, 2023, through December 31st, 2029, introduced by Beckus.
So moved.
Seconded by McGinnis. Further discussion? Councilman Shoeb?
Madam Chair, after further conversation with legal, I think there's no need to continue the conversation you and I had earlier about centering commission.
Okay.
Center is correct.
All right, thank you for that clarification. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Shoeb?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Suarez?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, 6-0. Item 7F is text amendment 23002, application of Philip Euler to amend Lincoln Municipal Code, Section 27.82.050, imposition of impact fees to allow for a transfer of credit from an old location to a new location within the same final plat where the old location is converted to a roadway, introduced by Beckus.
So moved.
Second.
Whoa.
Seconded by Washington. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Bowers?
Yes.
Suarez?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Shoeb?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, 6-0.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
That concludes Section 7. Section 8 is Resolutions First Reading, is Item 8A. Section 9 is Ordinance's First Reading and Related Resolutions, are Items 9A through 9D. Section 10 is our pending list, Items 10A through 10C.
Seeing nobody here, no other business on our agenda, I move for adjournment.
Second.
Seconded by Bowers. Please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?